Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwine. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, we're so glad you're here today.
We are so thrilled to have you. We also have the incredible and comparable Colin and Julie from our team here. Hey guys.
Hello.
How's it going everyone?
Appreciate you and for all of you coming in, say hello, let us know where you're coming in from. I know we've got some familiar and new faces in the crowd here today. Really great to see all of you here. If this is your first time joining us, welcome. We do this every Thursday. There's always something new to learn and of course, this is always an opportunity to plug in with our team to ask questions, to get hands-on help. And of course, in the case of one person today who actually scheduled time, we could even dig into some projects and Q and A and planning and things like that, which I anticipate being what will be going over in that period at the close of our call. So again, head on over into the chat, let us know where you are. Yes, Worm, Connecticut, I'm in the tri-state area as well, Dev. I went for a walk without a sweater today with my dog. Sixty-something degrees in New York City in February. It's wild. Awesome. So, so excited to see you guys all here today from all over. We are again, just thrilled to have you here. I want to go over a little bit of housekeeping here at the top of the call. I normally go through slides, but I'm going to be walking through a checklist with you guys that you have already received. If you signed up for our emails and you can do that if you haven't already at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. Those of you who are signed up for that received a checklist that we'll be using today. And of course, we'll include that with the download section information when we post this up to YouTube later today. So that is, this call is a weekly work session is designed for us to get together, work on your young living business and to do that. Together, we also have the opportunity to work together weekly. You can go to getoiling.com/websitereview. If you would like to sign up for dedicated space here on one of these calls as one person did today. And then of course, if you are going through the training here and you're kind of getting the ball rolling with Get Oiling, but you want some extra help, you want to maybe have some extra hands, you want somebody to maybe help do this with you or for you. We have an incredible qualified concierge team to help you with whatever your project is, whether you need a VA or your entire website or vaults built. And you can go to getoiling.com/concierge to get access to that information and get in contact with our team. So we are going to be going into a little bit of a screen share here today. So we're going to go ahead and pop out a video. So we've just got good quality there as we have our screen share going, but we'll come back and hang out with you guys after we have gotten this all set up. So let me make sure that's my whole screen. That's not what I want. Sorry, here we go. Believe it is working now. There we go. Perfect. So this is our checklist and Greg, thank you so much. Greg, put that into our chat here. And of course, this will be in the description when this gets uploaded. So what we're going over here today are getting started essentials. When you get started with Get Oilings, your dashboard, that's what it looks like. When you get started with your account, you are able to get started with us for a dollar for your first month. If you've signed up through a friend's link, you actually get a month and a half for that dollar, which is pretty cool. So anyway, what we're going to be getting through here today are really just some basic essentials. Kind of explain some pieces of the system, but even if you've been with us for a bit, you may or may not know about or know why they're important. So I think this is going to be a valuable refresher. If you've been with us for a bit, and of course, if you're just getting started, this is something that I would absolutely encourage you to draw your attention to first and to kind of run through the first two parts of this checklist before you start going in and and getting to work on any projects and things like that that you plan to work on. So the first thing that we recommend that you do is to set up your profile. And all of these links, by the way, are clickable and you can check off what you're doing as you're doing it. So let's go and check out our profile and make sure that it's set up. Now, I want to show you where you can always go to access this. It's right here. When you click your name, when you're logged in to Get Oiling. So you can actually go there, straight there from clicking here. Right? So that's what that is. And actually, I'm going to open in a new tab when I do this. Or actually, no, I'm not. Okay. So, so this is our profile. And it's right here. You're going to want to put all of the correct information in here that needs to show up on your website. This is all stuff that's going to show up for say, your contact number. It's going to show up at the bottom of your emails to designate, you know, who's mailing and where from, where your business is located, et cetera. Right? So you do get to decide what goes here, of course. This is the email address from which everything you send out of your Get Oiling account will go to your people. So if you have a custom email, which we'll talk about here in a minute, make sure that's what's here. Also, of course, with Get Oiling, you can have your own business phone number and you can just click the little chat right here to get that ball rolling if you'd like. That can be the number that you include here for your website phone in lieu of your own personal number, if you'd prefer, highly recommend it. Of course, you do need to have a street address here. There are some important legal requirements, especially depending on where you are in the world, where you are supposed to disclose a business address. Oh, and by the way, if, if the link, this link right here should be working just fine. But if you are talking about the links that are inside of it, Kiana, that it may be that you need to sign into your Good Oiling account potentially, not entirely sure. But this right here, just make sure that you've got this filled out first and foremost, right? You can also here, you know, adjust your passwords that you use to get into Get Oiling. You can choose whether or not you receive promotional emails from us and you can choose your own personal device notifications. If you'd like to delete a device that you've registered for the Attract Well app, or if you want to, of course, manage the push notifications that you have on any of those apps. So make sure that this is done first. Because again, before you ever go out there and send something, we want to make sure that you are set up correctly with all your bases covered. Now, another thing that you may want to do that we definitely recommend when you get started with Get Oiling is to go ahead and fill out my story and photo. So of course, you can click this to go straight to it, but you could also find it right here under your website menu. This is where you're going to put your photo, of course. You're going to share a little bit of your story. You can be explicit about your story being about Young Living if you'd like, of course. Make sure that you are following compliance guidelines for that. Or you can, you know, leave this up to a bit of curiosity. What's going to happen when you set this up is that you have the ability to show this on the bottom of your landing pages, at the bottom of your blog posts and your events, and on the archive list for your blog posts and your events. In addition to the sections on your built-in page themes. So I'm going to use a Leg Builder link to show you one of our built-in themes. And of course, you get this when you sign up for Get Oiling. You have built-in themes for your respective markets. And of course, this is where your story and photo shows up. So if you're utilizing one of the many beautiful professional built-in themes that we have created for you with Get Oiling, if you add your my story and photo to your website, under that website menu section, this is going to make this website your own. And that's basically all the work you got to do to make it your own. If you're using our website themes, okay? Now, next, and we did talk about this in detail on last week's call and you can click this link right here in your checklist to go watch the video and learn more. It is really valuable for you to have a custom domain, meaning your own web address and a custom email address that's connected to that web address. I don't want to get too far into it here, but it is really important for your deliverability, meaning your ability to safely land the emails that you send into the inbox of the people that you want to receive them. You do run the risk if you don't follow the steps that we talk about here of landing in the spam folder, the trash, the junk folders. And you know, potentially having your addresses flagged so that even before someone has the chance to hear from you, you could be flagged by their email provider as being suspicious or as being spam or junk. So if you want to avoid those eventualities, there are some steps that you can follow. Make sure that you follow those steps that we talk about here. It basically entails deciding what you want your, your domain name to be. So yourname.com, what you want your email to be, and then reaching out to our team. And our team can help you make sure that you are set up and good to go with your custom email server and your email authentication with those two things. Okay? So that's the next thing. It's a very, very, very important thing. If you plan to be sending email regularly and especially if you have a larger list to whom you plan to send marketing messages. Now, as I mentioned at the top of the call, if you want to hand with getting any of this stuff done that we're talking about, building out your site, building out your vaults, you know, the strategy for how all this stuff comes together, creating your brand, all that kind of great stuff. If you want help or if you need somebody to update stuff on a monthly basis or whatever for you, we have everything from VA services, you know, sort of private handholding tutorial sessions all the way through to master site and system builds. So if you need it, you can dream it, we could do it. And you could go to our concierge team and there's a link right here. It's also getoiling.com/concierge to get in touch with that team. Now, to get help, right? If you're doing this yourself, congratulations, go you. There's a few ways for you to get connected and, and to learn more and to get help. First of which, highly recommend that you connect with our incredible community of Team Young Living Brand Partners. And that's going to be in our Facebook group right here. Of course, you can click this link, head over there and join. You'll find our team, you'll find incredible folks in there sharing what they know, sharing what's working for them. And you'll really, I, I think, just see your cup filled by an incredible community because that is what we're all about, right? Okay. So if you're looking for quick answers to questions, we also have this cool thing called our Help Center. Now, what that looks like is this down here. You see, they wave at you when you hover over. So over this little question mark, you just click. And this is the Help Center. And this is where you can type in, maybe you're working on building your website. And so I want to type in the word website and you can see all these different topics that we could follow. So maybe I want to customize my website. And so this actually goes through a lot of different options here, even creating a custom website. So if we want, we can customize the built-in website, which is what we talked about here first, or we could even go and create a custom page. So we can actually click links and we'll take you all the way through. We've got tutorials in here. There's, you know, these, these great little screenshots where we've got diagrams and we show you what goes where. To break down the different sections of how to use different parts and features of this system. So please do your best to make use of this Help Center. It helps us help you because we can actually see the analytics of who is looking for what. And if you find that you can't find something, that tells us that we need to make a new thing that can be here to help you whenever you need it. And this really is the quickest way to find the answers that you're looking for is to pop into the Help Center. Okay? Now, the next thing you want to do, and this is something I discussed at the top of our call here today, is to sign up for our weekly calls. That is at getoiling.com/websitereview. You just pop in your name and your email here. And of course, you'll get access to the emails that will go out first of the week, whenever we announce what our topic will be for that week. And of course, you'll get a reminder when it's time to go live along with the link to join and resources like what we've shared today. And then of course, you get the replay. If you would like to sign up for live help, if you want dedicated support, you can click the link right here and that is getoiling.com/website review. And when you sign up here, it does not have to be specifically your website. It could be anything that you are looking for help with. When you go to that site, you're able to actually say what it is that you're wanting to learn, what you're needing help with. And then it'll take you to a place where you can schedule a, an upcoming call when you could actually hop on, on a call just like this one that we have every Thursday, we can work together. All right. So if you are exhausted, or if you've exhausted all of these options and you still need help, you're not able to find what it is that you're looking for, you can contact us directly. That is support@getoiling.com. And of course, it finally loaded. My web browser is super slow this week. All right. So yeah, this is what you will fill out if you want to have a live review. All right. We also have lots of amazing learning resources. We have these weekly live calls and that's the one that we're on right now. And of course, one that you can join in the future, that's getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We do have a YouTube channel that is completely full of all kinds of topics. We've got these playlists that you can see that cover everything from setting up your e-commerce with an online store, email and text marketing, managing your contacts, pulling in contacts from your VO, using the app that we have for you and your clients and customers. You know, there's business training mindset, there's blogging and events, private member area on your website. All of these are topic focused. And of course, you can access any of these at any time. And they're all really in-depth, all of them. So you could always go there and learn exactly what it is that you are looking to learn more about. And we also have free courses. And this actually links off to an article where we have an up-to-date listing of all of the free programs and courses that you have available to access. And so you can learn a little bit about all of these and what they can do for you when you click on the link right here. All right. So this is at this point, right? This is basically, if you've gone through this initial setup, you have connected to all of the help resources and you've familiarized yourself with the learning resources, you're at a good starting point. Right from here, we can start looking at what our goal is next. And so I've included here a couple of things that you might consider for next steps for you. For a lot of us, if we already have a base of customers from Get Oiling, we might want to import our list from the virtual office from Young Living so that we can start our strategic communication, staying in touch with our people, sending out messages to whoever needs to receive those messages. And you'll actually find in this particular training, I've created slides for you that even have screenshots of the VO that show you exactly what to upload and how, right? So that is one of the directions that you might want to start with. Another would be to learn to use the Good Oiling Contact Manager. Right? That is really at the core of the Good Oiling system is a place for you to manage all of your people, to know who to reach out to, what it is that you need to do for those people, who's been active. And of course, you can communicate in bulk there as well. Now, and this is a playlist actually, that's on our YouTube channel. So we have lots of trainings here on different ways that you can manage your contacts with Get Oiling. Another thing that you might consider doing is getting started on the project of moving your Young Living Serving Groups off of Facebook and onto your own website. This is a free course. And we actually, this is a previous training that we held where we talk through some of the steps that you would follow. And then of course, we have a free course that you can get access to that shows you exactly how we recommend moving your groups off of Facebook. You could also learn how to create a custom website that reflects your personal brand. If you're logged into your Get Oiling system and you click that link, it's going to take you right over here. It's where you can get access to the brand, My Business Workshop. Inside of this workshop, you have a full suite of templates that you can use to set up your website, including pre-work exercises. So you can actually come up with what to say on your website without having to sit there stumped figuring out how to design and figure out what to say at the same time. So we actually answer a lot of important questions that need to sort of create the information that will show up on your website. And we do that in a really simple, easy logical order. If you've been through the Brain My Business Workshop, pop into the chat and let folks know how it's helped you and what you've done with it. Cause that is definitely a great place for you to start if you're wanting to create a customized personalized website, if you want to graduate beyond our built-in themes. And then of course, finally, regardless of where you are and what you are hoping to get done, we're here for you. We are here to support you. Of course, we've got loads and loads of free options that we've shared with you, training that you can attend live, in-depth trainings that you can watch whenever you want, courses that you could go through, templates, resources. But of course, if you are at a shortage of time and you are looking for ways to get more of this stuff done more quickly, definitely do consider reaching out to our team. And you can do that by going to getoiling.com/concierge. And you can learn more about what our team can do for you. And of course, learn more about the folks who are doing the great work. So we are again, so excited to be sharing this stuff with you today. I'm really glad that you guys are here and are able to kind of click through this with us. So tell me, when we get into the chat over here, hop in and tell me if there's anything that you maybe haven't done yet that you now know that you need to do. So Kelly says that she's currently going through the Brand My Business Workshop now. She says, "It's so powerful and given me clarity and helping me to work through steps I didn't even know I needed to take." I'm so glad that that is helping you, Kelly. There's, I mean, none of us got into sharing oils to become web developers. Right? Like that's, that's not a thing. So we're here to help you make sense of what you need to make sense of. So you can take the steps that you need to take. And then of course, if there's anything we can take off your plate, we've got a team who can. So, so yeah, I hope that that is helpful for you guys. Definitely make sure that the first set of steps in the checklist are handled there. Especially where it comes to getting your email squared away, verified, validated and set up with your own custom domain. If you plan on using, if you plan on using us to send email marketing. So what I'd like to do now, of course, you guys feel free, if you have questions to pop into the Q and A and, and ask them. If you have any questions about what we've already covered, of course, by all means, ask that. And what I would like to do now is bring out Kiana to chat. Kiana signed up for a live review today and had some questions about getting her website set up. So, hi, thanks for coming. It does look like you're muted right now.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. I was just, I finally got into that link, so I was printing it out. Okay, now I'm back. I guess the questions are, I have someone that's helping me. And one of his biggest questions was, why would anyone come to this site and be a member? So I could not answer that, except for the fact, the reason I purchased it is because my downline can, if they're choosing, you know, be, get their own link and have their people come in and look and ask questions. So we can work as a team. That was the only answer I had.
Yeah. So a couple of things, right? So obviously, not, not all web developers know the, the mechanics of network marketing and how we go about utilizing tools to, to convert business. And the way that you position a Young Living Brand Partner business online is 100% different from how you position a chiropractor's office, or you know, a shoe store, or, or any other typical type of commerce that you would place on a website. And so there are two ways essentially, you're going to use our site on the front end to answer his question about why somebody would choose to become a member. The first answer to the question is a very simple and straightforward one. And that is that your built-in themes. So the one that you currently have up for your website that has, you know, we have, and actually I showed one briefly. We can go take a look actually at your website as it is right now. Yeah. So you have the healthy living theme here. Now, this is something that you could simply treat as a tool, as a presentation tool. So you are out in the world and I know you've enrolled plenty of people. You know how to get people started. You know how to introduce Young Living. This becomes a supporting tool for you when a website is a tool that you want to use to share Young Living with someone. Because what you have, when you use these themes is the ability to scroll through. It's obviously well-developed. It's pretty. We're talking about healthy living and that's clear. We've got a little bit of your story here that lends this credibility because the person knows you. And then of course, they can click off and watch any of these videos, learn about product lines, you know, learn about why Young Living is different, et cetera. But we don't expect this page, this, this site on its own to do 100% of the heavy lifting of someone becoming a Young Living customer, right? Even if you were to send a prospective Young Living customer straight to Young Living's own website, if we were just to go to Young Living and, and we just sent somebody there to our coded link, this isn't really compelling enough for someone to necessarily become a member either because, well, you need to have some context, right? You need to have a relationship, you need to have a conversation, et cetera. So the answer to the first question is really, you know, that this is a tool that helps you to present Young Living in your normal course of business when you are sharing Young Living. Or as an example as well, let's say you are doing live events. You are inviting people to register to RSVP for events, which of course, we do have that here where you can create events where maybe you're hosting classes or something like that. And then of course, if somebody is sent that link, then they would be able to go and peruse the homepage of your site that has all of this other cool information, et cetera. So that's the first answer. The second answer is when you brand yourself, then you're building a, a following and a list for your personal brand. And that would be, you know, building out your own website. I'll give an example here with Jackie. So Jackie's a platinum with Young Living and she's been with Young Living for over 20 years at this point. And, and so she is talking about being a resource for natural wellness. She's talking to women specifically about creating vitality in their lives. She definitely does talk about Young Living in, in an explicit way from time to time on her website, but it's not, it's not everything, right? Like what she's really talking about is, is something that, that actually helps women. And so she has people apply for a wellness consult where they can, you know, share some of what their goals are. And then of course, once they're on this call, armed with these answers to the questions, Jackie can then, you know, more readily, more easily get that person signed up for Young Living. Because our goal isn't just to send them here and to have them make one purchase. Our goal is to have them see this as a long-term solution to their goals, to their problems, to their lifestyle. And so the only way to do that is, is to not just rely on a page or even a set of pages, but to allow those pages to be supporting tools in your strategy to convert those relationships and conversations into customers. So you have two options there. Number one is to do exactly everything that you've already been doing, right? And utilize this built-in theme as a way for you to, you know, have another tool in your back pocket in terms of the, the front-facing stuff to share Young Living. Or of course, you can, you know, sort of level up, if you will, and and create your own brand where you can offer all kinds of interesting things to collect leads. But of course, at some point, you can then expose to Young Living.
Well, that's cool. So I can, my other business is coaching. So I do combine the two in one-to-one and, and to all my, my, my group. Cause I've been with Young Living also for over 20 years. And I was a platinum. I want to get back up there.
Awesome.
COVID changed things a lot. You would think it would have went the other way. Okay. Well, that gives me a lot of help on what to say to him. And also, because I do want to put out an email and I'm going, what do I say to people? But I have gotten some ideas, you know, I'm providing them a platform and as, and a special link that they could also use to help build their business and we can work as a team. And it's a specialized community. And it's private and it's confidential. And then also offering my sessions as a certified professional educational coach too, where I can help shift and change their mindsets.
Fantastic. Yeah, that is, that's actually what you've just described. It's probably the most popular collection of use cases for the Good Oiling site because there are so many folks who have complementary businesses that, that are adjacent to and that work alongside Young Living. And so you can really co-brand and run in effect, multiple businesses from your one site. And it's quote unquote, multiple businesses. Your brand is the business, right? Your brand is why they would choose you for coaching. It's why they would listen to you when you make product recommendations, right? And so, and that's, that's really the value of kind of creating your own branded website. So, so that's, that's really the short answer. And where, where it pertains to your team and working with your team. And I did see that you have a Leg Builder link that's set up for someone on your team. That's a really cool feature of our system to be utilizing. When you are utilizing this, then you've got the ability, as you've done here for a member of your team. So for somebody who is just maybe not yet in the place where they're ready to invest in their own platform. Or you know, they're, they're maybe just getting their feet wet. They don't need a contact manager yet because they're not really building the business yet. Then of course, you can go and create a link for them and give them, you know, their enroller sponsor referral. And then you could pick any of these different themes. And now instantly, they have their own. And now instantly, they have, uh, their own version of your website that they can use. And what this also does is it creates a contextual signup link, right? Because if, if these are all, um, you know, baby products, so like my sister-in-law, for instance, uh, just, uh, just had a baby a couple of months ago. If I wanted to present to her solutions for her new baby, I would be way better off just sending her a leg builder link here that just has the baby's theme. Than trying to like, think about all of the things that I would want to say and products I would want to gather, right? Because we shouldn't be product catalogs in our brain. Uh, we, we need to be duplicable. And that's not a duplicable thing, right? So just creating something like that to share and send, uh, for yourself or of course, for someone on your team. These are, the built-in themes are just really powerful sharing tools. So I think if you're coaching, you should 100% uh, be focusing on, um, at some point, creating a personally branded site. For sure.
Okay, um, I think you helped as much as my brain can handle.
Awesome. Well, definitely check out, I would recommend that third section of that checklist that you got today, the, the different learning resources. The courses that we show there, uh, might give you a, a, a nice sort of jumping off point. So if you could say, for instance, I want to go ahead and create my branded site, just, let's just start with the, um, the brand my business workshop and you can go through that and get all the templates, have your guys set them up that's working with you, uh, the person that's helping you. Um, and, and that could give you a great starting point, right? Um, and, and of course, you know, they're, they're free to, uh, reach out to our support team as well if they're working on your behalf. If they have questions.
Yeah, okay, um, this helps a lot because I can also go watch this again and pause you. Cause you're very good and very fast.
Thank you.
Hopefully I will be that fast. I'm that fast with Young Living oils, but not on computers, you know, working on them.
I hear you. I've, I've been out in the south for too long.
I really appreciate all your help and, um, and I'm, when we get the email that gives us the re, or does that happen? We get a replay, a link, so I can send it to him. Because, um, he's not able to be on this call today. He had an important, uh, business meeting. So I said, okay, it's recorded. I know that.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and, and what you'll want to do is just, uh, yeah, when you get the link, just forward, fast-forward it about 20 minutes and you should be good to go.
Okay, no problem. I've been at the beginning, so I saw how, uh, at what point you turned it over to helping me. So I, I got that time down. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out, Kiana, and we're excited to be a part of your journey back to platinum and beyond.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got a couple of questions here. Kelly says, I would like to have my back porch brand as my homepage and also have my Young Living pre-made page as another page, but I'm not sure how to set that up. Well, Kelly, we got some time today. Let's do this. I'm going to bring you out to chat. Hey, how are you?
Oh, I'm good.
Good to chat with you. Uh, all right, so where, what is your, your back porch brand? What is that called, um, in your system?
I don't know. My system is a mess.
Okay.
If you go in and look, I have no clue what I'm doing with it and it really is a mess. So I've been doing the, uh, branding, the DDA and the, um, market mastering, kind of all together, trying to figure out what I'm doing. I had started out as thinking I was going to just do the Young Living as my thing. And then as I got into DDA, I started digging a little deeper and finding, oh, that's really not my calling. It's kind of like a secondary to what I want to do, as we've been talking in some of the other, um, classes. So now that I'm getting more clarity on what I want to do and trying to start working on some of my canvas stuff and putting things together, I'm trying to figure out how this is all going to look after I get my branding things done.
Okay.
But I don't know how, and, and you're encouraging us to start taking, um, steps on blogging and, and doing all the things. And I have not even thought about colors and all that kind of, you know, like the eye-catching things. I haven't even started on that stuff. But I don't know where to, I guess, go from here or how to think about lining these things up. I'm very visual.
Got you. Okay, so is this the back porch or is there? Okay, this is, you want to have this set up as your homepage for now and then have your pre-made page maybe behind it?
Yes.
Okay, this is actually very easy. So, um, what we're, what we're going to do, this, because you have this set up as a landing page, we're able to connect this to a built-in theme on your website and have that be the homepage for your site while you're working on building all those beautiful pages out from DDA and from our brand my business, uh, workshop. So where we're going to do that is under customize my site. And do you, do you have a preference for the built-in themes, you know, body systems, basic oils, healthy living? Do you, do you have a preference?
Just picked one. I just picked the body system.
Okay.
For right now.
All right, and then the landing page, we're going to use this back porch registration form.
It's a mess.
No, it's, no, that's perfectly fine. So, so this is, that's going to be our homepage and we're going to save. And watch how quickly that came together. But this is your homepage now.
Okay, so, but if you look at what I have on, like, nothing's cohesive.
Okay.
Well, there's nothing in there that kind of like even goes together at all.
Everything starts out with rubbing two sticks together, you know. It's, it's good, the spark has to start somewhere. So this is, it's a, it's a good starting point. So the fact that you have it is great. And honestly, honestly, Kelly, what's most important is what you say right here. Right? It's the message. It's, it's what people are going to read. Can you have a beautiful picture of, of a back porch or ideally maybe you on a back porch right here eventually? Yes. Is it going to break everything? No, it's okay. You'll, you'll get there. Obviously the lime and the girl that's not you, like eventually, you know, go in and, and make a couple of changes here. Cause you, you said you're gonna be, start getting into Canva and working on colors and things like that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I wouldn't create a bunch of work for yourself before you figured out what those are going to be. Cause then you're going to have to go back and change the things that you've already done, right?
Okay.
Yeah, so if, if that's your next step, let that be your next step and this is cool, because you've said what you need to say. Right? And then, um, and there's you down there. So this is, that's, that's the front of your website now. And now, now you just want to get into Canva and just make sure you've got three images that you want to use, uh, on this page and it's done.
Okay, so even like the verbiage on what I have set up here is not correct. Because like I said, I, this is what I started with, um, and I'm evolving from there. So how did you go in and change all this and where did the Young Living stuff go?
Yeah, so the Young Living stuff is behind it. So if we go, um, this is what we have up over top, right? So grab a seat on the back porch and when they enter their information in here, they're going to be on your list. And it's also, it's going to send them to the same place that somebody says, uh, no thanks is going to, why did it do that?
Because nothing's set up there. I don't have any, I don't, I, like I said, I don't think I have anything that links any, I don't, nothing's linked to each other yet. I don't know how to link things together and I got.
Actually, no, I mean, this is, this is supposed to do this automatically and that's what I'm kind of trying to figure out here. Greg, does this do the same thing for you? If we're on like the back porch, we go grab a seat and, oh wait, now it's saying, it's not giving the no thanks. Oh, that's because it's not the homepage. Hang on a second. Let's go look at this one more time. So we're going to go to dashboard, because we do have it set up, I think correctly. I've already, I, I've already clicked through. So once somebody says no thanks, I don't want to register, they're going to go straight here and this is what they're going to see.
Okay.
So this is on the other side of it. So if they opt in, they see this. If they don't opt in and they click no thanks, they'll, they'll, they'll see this next. So that's, that's set up. And that's what you were talking about, right? Like have that landing page as the first thing that people see. And then after that, they could see this, right?
Okay, right. And or to drive traffic to this after like we get into, um, maybe a conversation. So if they register for the back porch, because in the back porch actually, um, will eventually go into a vault that will then break down what the back porch is more designed for.
Yes.
And then also I have the other vault for like the oil education is where I'm trying to head with this.
Right, right. Yeah, so when you have the, when you know what you want to say, uh, to invite people to a vault, for instance, you're going to go into and, and make sure that, so right now, this is going to send the default campaign, uh, that comes with Get Oiling. It's just a general prospects campaign. Uh, and this actually, uh, if you go into the brand my business workshop and you use the verbiage and the templates that are in there, it actually unify, it utilizes this built-in, uh, new prospects campaign in the system, which is the default campaign, uh, in your system unless you've changed it. So, uh, I, what you would be doing basically is you would, you would create a new campaign and attach it here that would say, you know, come on over to the vault, here's what you'll find, et cetera, et cetera. And then in that campaign, you'll be sending them over to that vault, once you have it ready. But let, you know, don't, don't get too far ahead of yourself, you know, and, and thinking about all of the bajillion things that you'll eventually need to do, because that's just going to get you frozen in place. So.
Where I've been.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't need to think about what you're, like, if, if, if we need to keep our feet moving, we obviously need to have an idea of what we want 5,000 steps ahead, an idea. Uh, but if we're focused too hard on it, then we're just standing here squinting and we're not actually moving toward it, right? So, um, so yeah, I would, uh, what I would focus on is, uh, is, you know, get your landing page set up. And if your main goal, uh, is to, you know, really just start generating leads first, which I would recommend for sure, uh, then, then get that vault created for, for that back porch, that kind of community that you want to create. Uh, and then you'll be, uh, and if you use the how to move your groups or even, uh, in the good oiling members area, we have a more basic training on creating your own member area and online classes. Uh, in, in either this one or this one, you'll find that there are lessons in there that talk about how to get people into a vault from a campaign, right? So you could, you could send an email and actually link them to the place where they can sign up for the vault. Or now you could actually create an automation and have them just click it from email, et cetera. But Kelly, all you need to know is, uh, is that you need to create the place that you want them to hang out. Uh, and then when you're ready to build the bridge that gets them there, if you don't feel like you're finding an answer that makes sense to you, then come out here. We'll do it here together.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
It's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of little stuff and that's the thing. And, and, and it's so long as we don't let the little stuff become too big, we're good.
We're good. Well, you're a great help. I appreciate all the coaching you're doing.
Well, thank you, Kelly, and I'm, I'm very excited to see what you do with all of this. Okay, did we have any other questions? I thought I saw one and Greg is just on it in the, in the Q and A here. Awesome. Did anybody else have any questions while we're still here? If you want to come out and chat about something that you maybe want to walk through together, feel free. We do have, uh, that time and space open here today. Let me see if I missed anything. I don't think that I did. Guys, anybody want, like, hey, we've actually got a little time for a website review. If you want to take a look, uh, at your stuff together, you guys, uh, or if you want to kind of talk through how, you know, what your next steps might be on a project that you're working on, feel free, raise your hand. Uh, and we'll bring you out to chat and we can look at what you've been working on together. Especially excited to see for some of you guys who have been, uh, in our more recent workshops, where we're really getting into a lot of focused action. Um, and by the way, uh, this is, I want to plug this because it is still a live thing, you guys. Make sure if you have not done this yet, that you go over into your account settings. You go over here to the marketing mastery workshop and you hop in here, because it's free. And we've got live workshops that we're doing. Oops, that's not what I want to show. Good movie though. Here we go. In this marketing mastery workshop series, we're going in depth on a, a lot of different really important systems that run your business. And this really is kind of designed to give you a logical full picture of how you run your Young Living business and how you use Get Oiling to support that. So, um, if you're maybe interested in that sort of first step of establishing your brand and getting people into, your, your world, your funnel, if you will, your business pipeline, uh, then you're going to really want to hop into this. Uh, we actually just had our second workshop yesterday, a live workshop, uh, where I shared a brand new resource that is a complete set of follow-up plan automations that you get to apply to your contacts throughout their process of becoming a Young Living customer. So it basically starts from, and I could show you exactly where this is. It's going to be in the replays here of the workshop calls. Uh, and we got a lot of really great feedback from this yesterday, but it's from yesterday's call, where we're basically giving you a to-do list that automatically shows up in your good oiling account for every person at every stage of the process. So if it's time for you to go and just like something on their social media or send them a quick DM to pick up a conversation, you're going to get told to do it. When it's time for you to invite them to look at information, then I give you a checklist that's going to show up in your good oiling that, that tells you, you need to do this and this and this and this. So, uh, do make sure you guys that you go and take advantage of that. It's going to remove a lot of the guesswork from your day-to-day and really get you into using, uh, your system in a way that feels really natural. Obviously tech can feel some, like something very foreign to us, especially if we've been growing Young Living in other ways before getting started with the software. But you'll find that it's just so freeing, once you get to the point, uh, where you are able to leverage technology in a smart way to give your brain some space to be creative in ways that you couldn't be before, because you're trying to remember everything, but you don't necessarily have to, to get the work done. Yes, there are replays in there and yes, you can get in right now. Absolutely. Please do go and, and take advantage of that and, um, and, and catch up on those replays. Our next live workshop is March 15th. Uh, and that, uh, third module that's going to release first of next month is going to be focused on your, how we take our new customers and turn them into the raving fans that become brand partners. So we've gone through your, uh, that's sort of the top of your business funnel. That's how you show up to the world, the surface stuff. And then of course, uh, into how we get someone in to Young Living. Uh, and then of course, we'll go on from there. So definitely check it out. Carolyn, you would like to take a look and have a question. I would love to chat with you. Let me bring you out to talk. Hi.
Hi, thanks very much. Glad to have a minute.
Yeah, of course. All right, I'm loading your, your site up right now. What would you like to chat about today?
Um, so when I, when people, sorry, there's a gap there, but when I type in, createdforyou.ca, my website comes up. Let me get rid of this, um, chat here, there. Um, but when I put it in, like, say I'm typing a message or a text or something to somebody, inviting them to go, what comes up is a little, oh, I forget the name of it. Like it's an icon of my freebie, which is all about skincare. So as soon as people see that, they think, oh, all she's doing is skincare. But what I really want is, um, well, they told me yesterday what I was supposed to ask for help with. Is it, uh, the meme is the wrong thing, correct?
Uh, so actually here's, I'm, I'm going to show you. I'm actually working on pulling up your account right now. That's why I don't have, uh, my screen showing. Okay, so what you're going to want to look for, and I think this is it right here, this CJ home. It's going to be in your page, in your page settings. And when you go to, so it's this choose sharing image, it's the sharing image right here.
Right, okay.
And, and so what you're able to do here is I like to use, uh, Facebook, uh, I have a template. Let me, I don't know if I could find it real quick. I want to say it's 1,200 wide by 630 tall. Y'all can back me up and tell me if that's correct. I think that's correct. Okay, thank you for the nods, guys. All right, so, uh, I don't know which Canva account I'm signed into, but basically if you go to, uh, add a design from Canva, let's do a custom image size, 1,200 by 630. Open up Canva. Do the whole cookie thing. And, and so you can just recreate an image here. Of course, you know, use your branding that you already have set up, any of the backgrounds, images, et cetera. Of course, you know, use your branding that you already have set up, any of the backgrounds, images, et cetera. You know, so if you wanted to, you know, basically, I I would use your own branding, right? And just create one that is for you, for your site. Uh and this would actually be um something that you could do on any page that you plan to share is to have a version of this uh for that. So it should ideally have uh your name, your branding. Uh and then, of course, if you're offering something in particular on that page, so maybe you have a dedicated page where you offer the skincare thing. Uh and and maybe in that instance, you offer the sharing image there. But but that's, that's what you would want to put there and then definitely add a sharing description because uh if on social media in particular, like on Facebook, when you post the link, it's also going to include whatever you say right here in addition to the title of the page.
Okay, because what I want there is that little butterfly and my picture and the name, it's for you, that's what I want.
Okay, perfect, yeah. So then you would create a Canva image with those things and then add that here as the sharing image. Uh and then, of course, add anything that you would want to say right here about it, um if it were to be posted and shared somewhere. And um and if and if this is the name that you want to show up as well, this CJ home uh when you share also, then then, of course, you could leave that or you could modify that as needed. Because this is what's going to show up when you share.
Hmm, okay, well, let me play with that, I'm not sure exactly if I do all the steps to do that, but um it certainly gives me a place to start because I've been frustrated with that.
Yeah, so it it's, it's really just as simple as as creating a sharing image in this case. Um and if you want to, you actually have the option, if you ever share any of your built-in theme images uh under, I believe, Customize My Site, you have the ability to um oh, that's, I I guess that's, that's gonna be under a different plan level, but you do have the ability to kind of modify what your uh your social sharing image is by default across your site. Um and then, of course, for your individual pages, you'll want to make um the specific ones for those or just reuse the the same one that you use for your homepage elsewhere on other pages.
And if I don't want to lose that beautiful little icon, where do I put that so I don't lose it and where I can find it again?
Yeah, so it should be in your library of images. If you've uploaded it already, I'm scrolling through currently and I haven't seen it yet, but I don't know how old it is. I mean, definitely see the, the butterfly is in your um your image library. Do you know how to access uh your, the images is that you've, the images you've uploaded?
I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, so um just as an example, I'm on the Customize My Site page uh and I'm clicking your logo here. Um and just scrolling down, you can actually see uh all of the the different things that you have uploaded. So there's this one, for example, uh and it looks like you've got, there's your, your skin one, here it is, yeah, it's right here. So you're not losing it, it's just, it's still in your library for use in another place.
All right. Good, well, thank you. I'll try to put it with a skincare message and put something else for the general one.
Excellent, excellent, good work on your site and uh thanks for coming out to share with us today.
Thank you.
Awesome, you guys, we got a lot of work done, didn't we? Learned how to get started, got some plans in place, branding some websites, this is good, this is good, awesome. So uh thank you guys again for being here, we will be back same time next week. We'll also be, of course, in our Facebook group as always. Uh do make sure that you take advantage of all of these great help and resources uh that are available to you. And of course, uh be on the lookout for the replay when we send it out, if you need to catch up on anything that you might have missed today. Uh we look forward to see you again next week and you guys have a great weekend. Take care.